Why'd you do that?
Super close.
I was getting too busy.
I didn't say it.
Maybe think tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Monday.
So, anything going on in the past week?
Uh, went to the Chamber of Golf Tournament. That was a little team. They put on another, uh, good tournament this year. Yeah, it was fun.
You mean?
Uh, took second place in my play. I'm a winner.
It's always a win.
Yeah.
That's all you have.
And I, uh, attended a, at a bus meeting. And, um, I really think we need to ask them, they're asking for an increase this year. Um, they're gonna be short, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their budget. Uh, that's not what they're asking from us, but, um, I wanna wait, I've, I've requested their budget presentation that they gave to us last week. I haven't got any yet, but, uh, I've also asked them for, uh, what ridership, because there is, uh, demand, uh, ridership within rural Erie County, and I have asked them for that information, how many people enrolled in Erie County who use our services. Um, you know, we, we've been carrying this program, which I believe in. I, I believe we do need this program, but I don't think it should all be on Erie County, um, the majority of it, anyway. Uh, when you look at the other counties, the cities take up most of the slack here. That's where the people are. Um, but I also feel like, you know, they're putting in two, uh, shelters in Manhattan. They've been done here yet. Um, but our ridership's at a hundred and one percent since before the pandemic. So it, it is, they are going back, they have, they're not fully up to, uh, pre-pandemic, but, um, it's getting there, both in all the communities that they serve. So, we need to take a look at that. And then I went to the production this weekend, um, what is it called? Joseph's? The drain code? Yes, thank you. Amazing tech, well, the rain code, it was actually very good. They do a good job here. Excellent, good local talent.
I didn't have any meetings this week. I didn't really attend anything.
You guys didn't have your convention?
Oh, last night, yes.
I don't know if that was in there. I just, usually you guys have done that in the past.
I, you know, not, I thought that's more, um, uh, thought it was on here a long time back.
No, it never has been. I got some plane that I don't know either played any, in him. The only thing that was on there was, uh, applications.
Maybe that's yours.
So did you guys pick somebody?
Yes, so, um, Courtney Gilbert was selected in that, that center of the government today.
How long did they, how long does that take?
Seven days, that's what she has. And so, she can approve it, she can disapprove it, or she can take no action, or she takes no action, then, um, it's important is, but, yeah.
I see the reason why she wouldn't approve it.
Sometimes, I don't know, she just, there's none more to it, she just always said, I'm gonna ask him.
Oh, really?
Oh, I did reach out to speak to the governor. So I reached out today, this, last week, and talked to Bruce Chetl, and I was asking him about what his thoughts were about the governor, where she stood on SBA, and, and so they were cautiously optimistic that one or two things would happen. One, she'd veto it, or two, if she sat on her desk and she doesn't sign it, then it just goes away.
The competition now?
And, so I haven't heard anymore. I had a call in the governor's office, like, last week. We never got any response back, so I'm more than, um, FYI, coming down the road. Sometime, I don't know when, but they're gonna try and do, uh, they're gonna push to, to, uh, what is it, L A B T R, and resurrect that again. Especially in my, what we're trying to do here, Senate Bill, to what we do, um, because there's a lot of money being lost, for what we're not getting, hard pressure, for the Republican House. So he said the night they had, and he said, um, on the door to give out support. So I thought that was a good, um, game. No, it's been a pretty quiet week last week. I see, uh, something about confirmation, but then I saw in the minutes when we did it last week.
Well, I invited everybody at ten o'clock, ten o'clock today, but since they're not here, we'll just go with the one from last week.
Usually they want one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll take it. I can get it too.
Our seniors put on a pretty good program.
Yeah, I like.
Well, it is.
Staying all their pictures.
Yeah. Either you make it down to the, um, Main Street Market, inside or anything. Benson, you see this?
What's on?
The chair is there after. No, this is.
Oh. Do you need it? I don't need that either.
Huh?
Yeah. Yeah. Why, man, it's mine.
Hi, Donna. Sorry, I'm late. I had somebody stop in my office. How are, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
And I was just thinking of this, so I wanted to say it before, but don't you even hear, you should be able to work before you come, I'm just saying, if they weren't working, do you think that we better or not?
Um.
Just something to think about.
Yeah. Well, we just met last.
This is, oh, I thought you were this week.
No, it was this one, Stan. No, that's honestly.
It's the third of them first?
Yeah, it was the first. Yeah.
Okay, well, they never mind.
Okay.
I was thinking it was next Wednesday, too.
I'm gonna start, start off with Freedom Park. That, uh, we're, we're putting it in our plan to do things, or trying to do it in, uh, just sections. So what we've done now, we've worked with, uh, Mac, and then Phyllis Fitzgerald, and we had some volunteers up there, and they got, um, a lot of stuff painted. They ran out of paint, so they didn't get everything painted. And then, um, we've got Whit up there, and he's taken down a bunch of the brush, taken out some trees, so you can actually see the trail now. And we're seeing an uptick in people that are going out there. And, um, he does the, the things for the county, and he said he was, um, really proud to be a part of it. And he's been up there working, and he's seen a lot of people, and it's, he said it's, it's really been good.
Who'd you say it was?
Whit.
Richard Whit, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and he's been doing a good job. Um, there's two trees on either side of, um, the sign that doesn't say anything. They're dead, so we're gonna have him take those out, and then see where that goes. We've talked with the, uh, National Guard, and they're gonna help us if need be, which we're gonna have to, we haven't, we've touched base with them a couple times now, so we're gonna continue to work with them. Um, because some of the, the machinery is leaning, and we don't want it to fall down the hill, and we don't know that, don't know that it will, but if they can bring some of their heavy equipment, then they can move those a little bit, and then we can get, um, we kind of wanna do like they've done up on the top with Tom, Tom McGanny, and have the gravel, and then have a cement around it. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing. Um, so we're gonna see how that all shakes out. So far, we're in about five thousand dollars. Whit said that it would, um, take no more than fifteen thousand, so you guys need to be aware of that. Um, we haven't signed a contract or anything with him, but since he's already working for the county, it's made it, it's made it much easier. We've had two truckloads of rock dropped out there. I just had, uh, a message that he needs two more truckloads dumped on the top, so they can start putting that from the top down. Um, long term, um, is what the path, um, this, not gonna happen this year, maybe next year, but have it made six feet wide, and that way they can take machinery up there easier, and it'll just make it easier to keep, keep it where it needs to be. Um, the folks with, uh, the volunteers that, um, Israel and, um, Phyllis have gotten, they're gonna have some more, and then they're also gonna send down the equipment and repaint it. And we've got the three colors that are allowed from the Army, so we'll have those colors mixed, and then that's what, what we'll use on those.
Green and green?
Huh?
Green, tan, and green?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right. So.
What would the cost have been if we would have had to ship all that stuff back? And I, and the reason I ask that is so we can preference the conversation of, why are we gonna take care of it? Why are we fixing it up and making improvements?
The cost.
Just getting rid of all of it.
Yeah, the cost was, each piece was going to have to be removed and put on trucks. The Army was gonna take it back, or however they chose to get it sent back to DC. And then it was going to have to be, uh, fixed, and then possibly go into Smithsonian. So the cost would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it was, um, and we would have had to have paid that, because there was an agreement signed earlier, not by the CBB, but it was originally signed by Economic Development, and then it, it's just gone through a lot, so, um, it was gonna, it came back, it was gonna come back on county. So, it's just, this is more cost effective. So, um, the next thing I've got, I, what we've done is, um, it was recommended that we show our calendars. So you've got our calendar for April, and then on the next page, I put a calendar report, so it gives you an idea of what everything on the calendar is about. Um, if you guys have any questions, I know I just gave this to you, so if you have any questions, just let me know. Um, it's been busy, obviously, always is busy, but, um, we're seeing some good things going on. Um, we sent the comparison report. Uh, you should've had that possibly, I'm hoping, in your emails. Um, and it, it shows that we're ahead, uh, in the collection of transient guest tax, and we're actually, um, behind or lower in the amount of money that we spent. So, our budget's looking, it's looking good and healthy, and we're doing a lot. We're doing a lot. Um, so another one of the things I wanted to talk to you about, and I've, I showed this to the board, we had a discussion about it in the meeting on Wednesday, uh, and I started out sending it to the executive committee. Uh, we were having some problems, because some of the mailboxes wouldn't take all the information that was coming over to them. Um, but I had sent an RFP, and honestly, the only one that came back that met the criteria of the RFP was from Mammoth. Um, and it is also, um, the least amount that was, was gonna cost for the brand development. So with that brand development, we'll have, uh, discovery meetings, and that will be with folks, uh, like the county, and the CBB, and anybody else that wants to be involved in being a part of the new brand development, and those logos, that will include the, uh, designing the logos, and, and, uh, the style guide, and the brand definition, and all those types of things. Um, you, we'll see another one that came in, that's with Madden. They do, um, things all over the state. Um, so their first option, you'll see, is, I don't have my glasses on, I believe it's twenty five, twenty-five thousand, twenty, yeah. Uh, the first one from, um, Mammoth is twenty-three five. The second option with them is thirty-five thousand, the, this, uh, third option was forty thousand, and then they were gonna charge us an additional ten thousand for designing a logo. So, that was pretty high. And then we had another one that came from in the middle, that's a, a group out of Manhattan, and that price was gonna be fifty thousand. The, uh, advisory committee voted on the Madden, which is the twenty-three thousand five hundred, and that would be, um, and you, you've got that in front of you, but it includes the, uh, discovery meeting, brand definition, key messages, development, logo design, style guide, and then launching the strategy, the stat, strategy.
And Madden's the one that does the, same thing as.
Yeah, and, um, then from that point, after we get that, then we'll look at what we wanna do as far as video and those types of things, and, um, I don't see a lot of sense, and we need to do this before we do that. So, this is, um, the next direction that we probably need to take. Um, and I've, I've talked to Crystal about the county side of it, and, um, she and whoever else from the county wants to be a part of that, they're welcome to do that.
So which one do you say Mammoth or Madden?
Mammoth. Mammoth is a, is a twenty-three five, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mammoth is a twenty-three five. They're the ones that, um, as Trish said, worked with the state on the To The Stars. To The Stars promotion, and now they're also, um, working with them to do videos and different things, web design, those types of things. So this is gonna be a good time to start rolling this out, because I know the county's gonna start doing a redesign on the website, so. That is a CBB advisory's recommendation.
So do you need a motion from us?
I think, I, I think it would be good, since it's that much money.
Uh, I will vote to move board with Mammoth, uh, and that is the CBB's, the board's recommendation.
Yes.
I will, uh, head motion to, uh, vote in favor of the board's recommendation.
Okay.
Mammoth signing, um, which would be the twenty-three five. Twenty-three five.
Correct.
On favor?
Aye. So if we get on this right away, um, we're hoping to have it completed by September, October. That's gonna depend on us, and how much we carry through, and with the committee that will be formed, or the, the partners that wanna be a part of this. So I think I talked to you guys a little bit last time about the, um, promotion that we're working on with Blue Jays. Um, so we've got, one of our local individuals in town has made some Blue, Blue Jays for us, and then they are currently up at the school being painted. And then we'll get the tags on them, and just distribute them around town, and then anybody that finds them, they're supposed to use a hashtag, and, and then, uh, put them up on social media. And there's another community that's doing it, and they're having some, some really good, uh, feedback on it. And there's people that are actually traveling into their community, because they've been doing it for about a year. They're doing horses. Um, so we're, we're in the beginning stages of that. So we started with a few, and we're gonna see how that goes before we do a lot. Um, and then we'll roll some out for special occasions, like probably Freedom Fest, and, um, when we do other things around town, we'll have some that are specially painted for those events, for people to find. So that is moving along. Uh, the plan that we're working on is moving along. I think we're, I think we're making some really good strides. Trish is on that with us, so. Um, and I, I was just at Governor's Council, and they're in the process. They've got a plan that they did about three years ago, and they didn't, they're actually, they're looking at their plan and getting ready to do their plan. So I've got their outline, a little bit of what they had put together, and I think it's a good outline that we can kind of follow. And I think it's a good outline that we can kind of follow, um, which I think we are anyway without looking at their stuff. So, um, there is another, um, thing that, uh, we're working on. We became members, and I know I've talked about this with you guys a little bit, we became members with, um, Sports Kansas. Sports Kansas is a group of communities, coalitions that get together and they work to bring sporting events into the communities of those, those communities only. So we've been going to those meetings through this last year. There's gonna be an event next week that we're gonna be taking part in also. And they're having, um, about three hours that they're gonna be spending with us from Kansas for the Sports Kansas group. And we're gonna be at Children's Mercy at the Soccer Field. And so we're gonna be doing it. We've got a tour set up to go through all of that and do all those things. And I sent you a list of some individuals that are gonna be going. So, um, I've got Paige. I've charged her, I'm gonna be going with her for about a year or so. And then I'm gonna have her do most of the Sports Kansas stuff. Who, and we, and I wanna see how it progresses, uh, because if we're gonna, if we're gonna build a sports complex, we need to make sure that we have an audience and it's gonna wanna come here. And I think right now we, we can use, the school's been great about their facilities. So right now we have places that people can go and do large sporting events. But this'll help us to, to fine tune it, uh, a little bit more as we're moving forward. Um.
Yeah, we talked about that a bunch. Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it would be great if we could spend five billion dollars and build this wonderful complex we're gonna enjoy, but we're not there. Uh, so what's the next option? Use the things that we have, update and upgrade the things that we have and start getting tournaments and hosting tournaments and, and things like that. So that's where, that's where we're at.
Um, the Department of Commerce has paid the first year and then Sports Kansas is gonna pay part of it for Huddle Up, which is a website that has a lot of information about when things are coming up for bids and what they are and what fits in your community and, and we're putting, we're in the process right now of getting all of our facilities that we can use on that website. There's also on Travel KS, there's a page that is all about, and Sports Kansas page, it's one that we populate. So we're in the process of getting all of that done. It's taking a little bit of time. The Huddle Up website is, um, one of the premier websites to be on that. Uh, it's about twenty thousand dollars. Department of Commerce paid for it last year. They're paying for half of it this year and then Sports Kansas as a group, we're paying the other half. So we are, we are on there. I've got, I went ahead and, um, put us on there right after we joined Sports Kansas. There's only so more, so many spots of people that can be on there. And so we're, we're one of them now that's on there. So now we need to get it populated and do those types of things. Um, so then, uh, oh, I, at Governor's Council, I also talked about the Attraction Development Grants. And those are gonna be announced, uh, next week is what they're planning on. The Attraction Development Grants had four hundred thousand dollars in them this year. So communities and different associations, different organizations could apply. And that's for something that's gonna be a large, uh, brick and mortar type of thing usually is what they want that to be. Not like a visitor center, but like helping with a sports complex or, um, the big buckle they did in Abilene, those types of things. The, um, legislature this year, they increased the state travel and tourism guy, uh, budget. And a hundred thousand, or not a hundred thousand, a million dollars will go into that fund next year for twenty twenty four. So we need to be aware of that because I don't know that the CBB will have anything, but we have folks in the community that would absolutely qualify to, to, uh, apply for those grants. So we'll see that, this, the, uh, Sprint Grants, uh, they're still going through them. They want to announce the, uh, Attraction Development Grant. And then the Sprint Grant will come after that. They're looking at the attraction, uh, 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 Attraction Development next week, so the week after they may make a decision and put out the Sprint Grants. They want the Attraction Development Grants out first. Um, it's National Tourism Week, so we're working, working on that. I'll, I'll tell you right now, we're not working really hard on it, but we're working on a newsletter and we're trying to let people know it's National Tourism Week. Um, and next year I hope that we, I don't know what we'll do with it. Usually it's just a letter in the paper, whatever. Let people know, hey, we've got this, it's going on. Um, do you guys have any questions? We've talked like fast and long.
No.
Okay. Um, if you do, you guys have, I'll have my cellphone. Yeah. Just give me a call. And I'm gonna go back and get ready for more stuff.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alrighty. Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Robison, Finance Director. I just have a couple of items to update you on this morning. As we've been super busy with, um, CIT audit and budget, so currently the trainer from CIT is here, she's working with the, the clerks in the treasurer's office. And so she's working on the receeding side and also the AP side. And as you know, today is normally a voucher day and I'm not sure if they're out here yet or not because there were some tweaks that they're still working on.
We only got one, they still do two.
Okay. So, and there will definitely be more. Uh, but we're working on the report and making sure everything balances. So, um, we wanted to make sure you can look at the vouchers and then if we can't get the report , um, prepared yet today, potentially you can review what you do today and then we can have the chairman, uh, you guys can come in later this weekend and sign off on that report. Um, the auditors have been here, they've taken a bunch of stuff with them, they went back and forth, forgotten to get some other reports. And so we're in pretty good shape overall with that. They have the information and everything's looking good so far. Uh, the budgets went out to the department heads last week. And so they'll be working on those, uh, and the deadline to get those back into the finance department is, uh, May twenty sixth. So then in June, of course, that will be when we're preparing our presentations. And Louisa will have you, have a voucher or a binder for each one of you guys to review in front of you when, um, they're presenting. But the intention is to have a computer in here and that will load those presentations and they'll also be on the screens as well for any concerned citizens that might be in the audience during that time. So they can not only hear us, but they'll actually be able to see what it is, how we're talking about. Um, just a reminder, I'll be out May eighteenth till June second. And so I'll have limited salary section and Louisa will know how to get ahold of me if something happens where it's adamant that you be able to reach me. So. Any questions on that?
Scared dumb. She said, she's leaving us home alone. Can the Health Department get to you in time?
Um, so they have got their information back to me and I do have that, that I provided to the, uh, auditor. And so with finally getting all of that information, it appears we will only have to do that compliance audit on our, our Befunds like we did last year, which is good because that saves county taxpayer dollars. Um, so I'll keep you informed on that if anything changes after he's reviewed it.
So no single audit?
I don't, I don't believe so. Just a compliance audit that the, um, federal treasury department requires with those Arba funds. So we'll be working with Charles a little more closely next year, so hopefully he has a better understanding of how to provide those grant dollars and expenditures. Uh, because in this case, a lot of times they expend it at the end of the prior year, but they get reimbursed at the beginning of the year that's being audited. Well, our Sifa is only the schedule of expenditure, so even though we get those grant dollars in that year, that is not what the auditor is, is auditing. They're auditing those expenses. So it's when the expenses occur. So if they're prior year expenses, we don't want them, we want them in this year. And then if we get reimbursed in twenty three, but they were expensed in twenty two, we've gotta have them. So that's where we've gotta take those off, but we've gotta add on the other ones. And, um, that gets us where we need the information. So the auditor can determine whether we need a single audit. So, and usually the, the key ones are gonna be the Health Department because they're static, they get them every year. And so we know, and we just gotta make sure we have the records correct. Any other questions? We have most of the appropriations scheduled. We don't have all the documents in yet, their deadline is, um, next Friday. So we sent an email last Friday to let them know, just as a reminder, Louisa will send another one for any, any of those that have got it in this week, just so they have another reminder before that nineteenth. So, looks great so far. Good, and thank you. Um, can you give Travis a call and ask him if he can run down here a minute on these IRBs? This IRB is only for the city, this wasn't gonna be us that we have to track and that we're losing tax dollars, right? It's just gonna be the city that's dealing with it.
Why wouldn't they?
Well, I just wanna be sure that we're not approving this as something that we're getting into. Cause it, it just says ad valorem, it doesn't say city ad valorem taxes, it just says ad valorem.
Hey, is that, you got a second? Can you run over here, please? Look at that. You still don't know how to use the phones?
My, my, my voice is loud, not on the phone.
I mean, we haven't been involved in anything with this to know anything about it, right? I don't think we were involved in that, or initial, uh, I mean, I wasn't on the commission then, but.
I think we just got a quick question.
Do you know anything about?
Uh, Camso, um, they're already doing payment with taxes or something? We probably oughta keep track of it.
I mean, it's not gonna affect, it's not gonna increase our taxes, they're still gonna have.
No.
Accounting level, it's just gonna be the city.
The way that was set up initially was, no. Camso Manufacturing bought the old Spartan Nash Refrigerated Warehouse. And did IRB to make improvements to the property. We're tracking those improvements and valuing the higher and higher and higher. But they're doing a payment in lieu of taxes, meaning they're paying what the taxes were based on that purchase price for a certain number of years.
So they're doing it more like in our year, kind of function.
No, it's just their payment, in lieu, there's, it's no taxation, it's payment in lieu of taxes is whatever dollar amount. It's gonna stay that amount for the next twenty years or whatever. Even though they're adding a hundred million dollars to the property value, that's not gonna change, it's gonna be that same amount.
But even when, was there a, a thing in there for the, cause they're adding on, so they're, they're, they're obtaining more property.
So this might be a new one, I don't know.
Oh.
What the agreement will say, it was, it was much more than that what we got last time. It was about how many jobs they'd add, full-time equivalents. They had to meet milestones, they had to do all these things. And then.
Isn't there, there's like eight acres kind of back on there?
Yeah, it's a pretty big property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's part of the initial.
Purchase?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, if you look in Orion, I mean, it's a, the pilot was initially based on something like five million dollar valuation or whatever they purchased it for. It's worth like forty million now, but they're still paying the exact same payment. But I still value it just like normal, it's just that value is. Yeah, I don't know if that's.
Here goes to taxes. I mean, we had to do an added tax issue because, um, it's different and we have to get help from software, but it's.
Yeah, cause it's, I think it's, actually it's exempt from my, we're still tracking the appraisal increasing, but the assessed is still zero because it's exempt because of the IRB, but instead of paying zero, they pay this agreed upon amount every year. Now, if this is in addition to, cause I, I don't know if there was a cap on that, like, you know, up to a certain amount or what, but we still just value it like normal, excessive and zero for in twenty years. Um, I don't know. That would be a new one. Cause I, I think it included the whole property. I, I didn't think there was a, you know, it's, it's just capped at the existing property. I, I thought it was just.
Eight acres was already on.
I thought, I don't know, though again, we, we still just appraise it like normal. That was an agreement and I think that was the. And I think that was the, but the, the, I still think there's review though, because you forego a certain, you know, taxes. The state foregoes taxes and the school district foregoes taxes because that's set at a certain amount. So I think there's still about to be all parties at least knowing about it and agreeing to it. I, I don't, I don't know all the details, but I haven't seen that. No.
I just came out today.
So it looks like a new one, right? Yeah. I'd say the last one I know was, was a pilot, right? So it was still revenue. It was just capped with that initial value.
So it was maybe not really a pro IRB?
Well, it was. Yeah, because they're exempt, right? In our taxation software, they just write a check that's not taxed. It's taken in lieu of taxes, right? So it acts like a normal IRB because they are exempt on the current one. But there was the agreement, I guess, in place that they would make this payment under the taxes. And IRB would only be valid if they had certain, I don't know, but, but added X full-time equivalent job by this date, this many by this date. And it was, you have to hit those milestones to keep this applied. But it was a substantial document that we got. I can see if I can find it. Copy of it. I'm sure we have it in our exemption. But the original one, it was, it was way more, it's, it's a big, big document. I was 20. I thought, I thought. I can see if I can find it. It's a long time. And again, I, I thought it was a project.
So I wonder if it went into place in like 2015 or 16 maybe?
I don't know exactly. I don't think I was the county appraiser. Maybe I just, so it's 16, 17?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Maybe we should talk to them and talk about it.
Let me see if I can find the, what we submitted to the state on their hat.
Thanks. Okay, next. Consideration of a resolution to consolidate county services who wants to take the lead on this. We have a resolution.
Uh, yes, Betsy. Is that right? A resolution concerning your duty? Yes, you need to call her over here.
Well, upon the direction of the commission, we threw up a resolution, Mr. Austin, I, concerning the consolidation of accounts payable, receivable, no, payroll account. And so the award of consolidation goes into the finance office along with HR. On the government full consolidation act allows a consolidation of offices to best serve the needs and functions of constituents. And that can occur where there's duplication of services across multiple offices. And so I think that the commission would like to do that. It would be best to read the resolution.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Whereas Gary County Kansas has general homehold powers granted under KSA 19101. Whereas KSA 19101C declares that county homehold power shall be literally construed from giving counties the largest measure of self-government. Whereas pursuant to KSA 123901, it said, the Kansas legislature has set forth the authority of political subdivisions to consolidate offices and functions to serve the needs of their constituents more effectively and efficiently through consolidating or cooperating consolidation of operations, procedures, and functions of offices and agencies of their subdivisions, which may be more efficiently and effectively exercised or provided by the central office. Whereas KSA 19-229 grants the board of county commissioners exclusive control over all county expenditures. Whereas KSA 19212 assigns the board of county commissioners authority to examine and settle all accounts of the received expenses of the county and to examine and settle all accounts charged against the county. In addition, KSA 19212 sets forth that the board of county commissioners is charged with the management of the business and concerns of the county in all cases where no other provision is made by law. Therefore, be it resolved. One, the board of county commissioners of Gary County Kansas hereby makes the following findings the fact. That payroll is currently housed across three separate Gary County offices, including the finance office, the clerk's, the county clerk's office, and the human resources office. That duplication of services exists and set operations, procedures, and functions of administering the county payroll. That account payable is facilitated by two different offices, including the county clerk's office and the finance office. And duplication exists in operations, procedures, and functions of these offices. That the administration of the account payable and payroll across multiple offices will result in inefficiency errors and duplication of services that are not in the best interest of Gary County. That the board of Gary County commissioners of Gary County has examined all relevant factors and solicited the duties of all interested parties. Therefore, know all meant by these persons. That the board of commissioners of Gary County hereby consolidates the management and operation payroll and account payable placed under the finance office. Two, that the board of county commissioners of Gary County hereby declares that the human resources office shall be moved under the umbrella of the finance department and shall report to the director of finance. Three, that the board of county commissioners of Gary County hereby consolidates the functions of the account payable, payroll, and human resources under the finance office to most efficiently and effectively exercise these functions in the best interest of Gary County. Yet, so resolved, we say that in the H233. That's the proposed resolution, the resolution 5A 2023. And so as discussed, it's set forth, it would consolidate all those functions under the finance office. It would slide human resources under the finance office for the purpose of consolidating payroll. So that's the proposal.
Well, I struggle with this one just quite a bit. It may just be the whole story. I think after the reunion and everything, you know, a new birth coming in. You know, I think it takes a lot off of her plate most of the time. So I guess, I think, I think it's probably wise move at this point in time. Another thing is that this way we can make no finger pointing between the different offices. So if anything goes awry, it's in one office. I think we've done a lot of finger pointing all the time. So from my standpoint, I'm okay with it. I did ask Betsy about, is there any stretch toward a rule that says HR necessarily on its own? You know, it's a standard one, part number. She researched it and said, okay, so this is checking.
Yeah, and several other counties have HR in other offices. I think like Barton County, they share a HR and finance office together. I think there's some other instances where HRs are together.
And I do think it's important to note with HR, well, HR is under the county clerk in Riley County. But the, the thing that's important to note with HR is there are confidential matters that need to stay within HR. That is not stuff that I'll be involved with. I won't be involved with work comp. I won't be involved with disciplinary actions because there's no reason for me to be a part of those situations. They're confidential. They're part of employee file. It doesn't concern me. The parts that concern me with HR is our compliance and our processes, ensuring that we're getting all the things done and that things that are happening in the HR office that affects other departments or other offices, that they understand those processes and things aren't missed because of that. That's going to be the key rule, the, the key role of finance being over these is me looking at the big picture of all the other departments and the effects it has on it. And that's where I think this is going to unify a lot of things because all of the processes will be of the same. And, you know, I feel like, like you said, you have this finger pointing going on between offices. Whereas if we set up our processes, the other departments understand it. They understand the reasons why. Then I think it will unify all of us in the end as well.
The bottom line for me is basically it is our responsibility. The money in this county is our responsibility. We are required and, and responsible for the bills. When it is under another elected official, which we have control over, that's where some problems have been caused and that's where some things have been done. And I take my responsibility as far as being efficient with our, our taxpayer money serious. And, and I feel that the person in charge of that money should be us along with a department head that we have control over as far as oversight. And until Sammy got here, I did not feel a head of thumb on any of the finances here at all. And I've learned so much in the last year. And there's a lot of things that we need to, to improve on. And that's what I, I hope with this new CIC and this new transition of departments. I, I, I have no doubt that things will get better temporal.
The word control scares me. So I, I, in terms of all the things we've seen in the, the last couple of years, and we know that this stuff gets out to the public. We know the situation that we've had financially has not been kept a secret. I, I, I don't want to go back and dwell on the past. However, that's what we were known for. Especially us sitting here in these seats when it comes time for reelections or you're sitting in a hot seat in front of other constituents and people that voted to put you here. It's, it's a, that, that's when you have to, to really look at these types of things. The last incident, I think, was the one that kind of did me. And we, we can't continue to have mistakes.
How many mistakes?
And issues of that, that, that standard happened within these walls, especially when we're talking about dealing with taxpayers' dollars. And even past taxpayers' dollars, we have employees who can get hemmed up in some of these situations that have occurred and, and it may not even been their fault. So I think moving forward, I would be in favor of this. And I just, we, we need the, we need constituents and taxpayers to understand that moving in this direction, there will be a clear set plan put in place. There, there will not be any, any more issues moving forward. We have a direct plan. We have individuals who will create a direct plan and who will associate with that plan that's implemented once, once we make this decision. I think that's what we should echo to our constituents and even employees here in, in the county zone.
Well, we have no say so over what another elected official does in their office. And when somebody who is an elected official is in charge of a duty that we are responsible for, I don't have, I have a problem with that. And it has been a problem for years. And, and so I think doing this, we're not just doing it to do it. We're doing it to, to improve the way we can do our job and our responsibilities that are set by the state. And, and that's the reason why I am all for moving those.
Well, one thing, one thing I would like to just remind you is there is human error. So, you know, to tell you that there's going to be a perfect system and no one is ever going to make a mistake is just, that, that's not something I can sit here and say because we, we all have human error. I would like to say we're going to minimize anything that is happening. And then the other thing is we are working with CIC. And so some of the processes that we've been using with, on this, and right now, we easily identified it won't work in CIC. I talked to the girls this morning and, you know, they told me these are how we've done it in the past. And obviously we can't do it this way going forward. So we will be identifying those kinds of things and making our processes stronger and better. And really, until you start working with it, you can't identify all of those. So that's kind of why you don't have your report in front of you this morning because there were some issues with the balancing based on what we've done in the past versus what we need to do going forward. So, you know, as long as we can identify and move forward, then it should be good. Okay, thanks.
And I totally understand. I do not think that, I mean, we all make mistakes. We make mistakes. Everyone in this room makes mistakes. But if there's a process that you're doing that isn't working, you answer to the board and we can request that you change that. If it's under an elected official, they, we can request it. They don't have to answer to that. And so that's the issue.
I will make the motion to adopt resolution 5A 2023.
Second?
Second, and then more discussion? All right, on Thursday, say aye.
Aye.
I would also like to make another motion, amend the agenda. Crystal has a five-minute executive session on here. Will it be regarding?
Not elected. Pay issue.
Okay.
And it shouldn't take any more than five minutes. I'm only going to need five minutes. So if you want five more minutes, my time, although I only got five minutes left.
Yeah, I would like to amend the agenda to add another five, possibly 10-minute executive session with Ms. Montrez.
Montrez.
Montrez. Sorry. Crystal, after.
For what?
Uh, not an elected person now.
So moved.
Didn't make the same.
I mean, sorry, second. Second.
Didn't make the same to amend the agenda for that. On Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Crystal?
First, I have, I think you're the only one that didn't pick yours up. Help recorder. And then you've got some side office specifications. No, you're fine. Just one thing that's come up recently I wanted to bring to the commission's attention to see if we want to change anything. For many of the capers working after retirement members, if they come back and work for any capers. if they come back and work for any capers-covered employer after they've retired, there's no earnings limit for them. They can earn as much as they want. However, once they hit $25,000, the employer has to pay 30%. So for example, if we hire somebody that earns $50,000 a year, after they've hit the $25,000 mark, the other $25,000, we pay it 30% to capers. So that's $7,500 just for capers for that. So we didn't know, I wanted to bring that to your attention so that we could consider maybe a policy or a practice. If we're going to hire somebody at that, now that each department has to budget their benefits, then to keep that in mind, because $50,000 doesn't sound like a lot paying somebody. But when we're paying 30% on top of that for capers.
I I think that should be something approved by the commission.
Works for me. So any capers working after retirement member, part-time is probably not an issue, but any full-time member, capers working after retirement, approved by commission to make sure it's in the budget.
Yep.
Okay, so now I would like us to go into executive session for five minutes for not elected personnel pay, including Mr. Livingston, Tammy, myself, and Betsy. Tammy doesn't have to stay, she can if she wants.
So moved.
Second. All three will say aye.